We don't have a quorum, so we're not going to call it a roll, but we're going to just have a discussion, budget review discussion, and I apologize to council members that I just totally spaced this off Thursday morning and I forgot to tell you until we're going to do this, but it's been my intent to have one every Monday and every Thursday, so I just forgot to include on the agenda. But we did get it on later in the day on Thursday, so we're here today just to discuss, as we have been, the budget, if anybody wants to talk about it. Michelle, you have anything you want to start with?
Well, I think I will.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if all of you saw your emails this morning, but I had an email this morning and it's, some of the questions in it were the same as some questions I got last week, so I think we'll talk about it a little bit. The first thing I'm going to do is hand out something that I think you should have, well, I know I handed them out at the January 22nd meeting, but I think we'll, I'm just going to give out more copies.
Why don't you go ahead and stop now, Michelle, please. Let's go ahead and call the, this budget review meeting, or the man in person, who called the roll this.
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Wilford?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Question for the agenda?
Second.
Call in favor?
Yes.
All right, closed. Very good. We have an agenda, thank you. We have a meeting. Michelle?
Okay, so I'm going to try to address a question that I apparently not getting answered very well. I've had questions last week and again this morning about the differences between the base option and the additional level that we distributed at the January 22nd work session. So I am, so it's the January 22nd work session. I handed out Excels that talked about the base level, and there seems to be quite a bit of confusion about what that base level is. So I wanted to take some time just to review that again. What that is, is the changes in personnel costs, basically from the FY15 budget, with some exceptions. And so if you look at the sheet that I just handed out that says change in cost base level at the top, that shows you what we changed from the 2015 certified budget. So personnel increases, salaries changed by 807,000, that's, and that total change is 2.49 percent. That includes 3 percent raises, step increases, longevity, and any changes in positions that were approved in between 15 and the 16 base level, which I don't believe there were any. Part-time salaries is actually a reduction of 29,508, and that is going to be for all general fund salaries. So one thing that probably changed a lot in the base budget is the sportsplex. We allowed departments to submit, let's wait for the train, it's too distracting. So departments could request the part-time salaries they felt they needed, overtime, miscellaneous pay, sick and casual payouts, and retirement payouts in that original personnel budget that we sent out and had them complete in the fall. So part-time can go up or down. The net happens to be a reduction, 29,508. I am predicting some of that is from updating the sportsplex projections because 15, if you remember, when we set the budget for fiscal 15, we hadn't even opened the facility yet. So now that it's been open, I think that leisure services is figuring out better how to manage it, and they had some reductions in there. There also are some increases in there, some of which, I mean, probably the biggest one would be animal control, which we've all talked about. So that's why you see that netting to a reduction. A reduction in animal control overtime, miscellaneous pay, and that's a certification bonus pay issue. Then there was an increase in payroll taxes because our salaries increased. So because your salaries went up, your FICA, Medicare, and IFRS has to go up, even though there were no rate changes in any of those. Employees sick and casual payouts, people are budgeting a little more for that, 33,000. Retirement payouts are actually a reduction of 38,000, and there are a few other miscellaneous increases. The next thing, next category is health insurance, and at the time the base was prepared, we continued using what we had certified for 15. So there aren't a great deal of increases in there, basically changes in retiree, and the other 48,000 would be from people changing from single to family coverage, for example. So those are kind of fixed things that we have to do. Then the police and fire pension, the reductions because the rate, they turn out to be net reductions for the rate decreases, but there's also an increase based on their salary increases, but that still nets to a reduction, and so that's the reduction of 230,000 you're seeing on here. We also went ahead and made, where these things get difficult is where you draw the lines. We went ahead and made a change to the attorney's budget, because as you all know, you elected, when Jim announced his retirement as of December of 13, we didn't continue with contracted services, we switched more to an employee. So those legal fees go down 35,000, and that would have increased salaries up above. So it should, it netted to zero because that was our agreement. Then, if you flip that over, you'll see that we did add in the increased state property tax replacement revenue from the state. And the reason we did that is because that is a replacement for property taxes, so it's very similar to property taxes, and we thought it would distort things too much not to include that as a revenue source. But those are all the changes that were allowed to be made in the base level. That was never intended to be a complete budget option that could be adopted without any further analysis. We knew at the time this was prepared, there were other changes that would affect it, but I'm often asked, well, what would happen if we just, if, you know, if we just kept the personnel basically the same as the prior year? So that's what the base option attempts to explain, and we maybe need to come up with a better name for it in the future, I don't know, something that would help everyone understand what we were trying to do there. Then, in the additional request level, which was the second thing that we handed out at the January 22nd work session, this tries to incorporate all the changes that departments requested at the additional request level. So you'll see there are more changes. The personnel services changes are different because more things were requested in that additional column, more overtime, more part-time, things like that. And when you request more part-time and more overtime and more full-time, that increases payroll taxes. So all those, all those things change in the additional level. Then, all the other items that the departments were requesting increases for are in the additional level. And that should be a relatively good summary. I think there's one thing that we missed because it nets out to nothing, but I don't think we included on separate lines on here for garage, the increase in expense and the increase in revenue. Yeah, I don't know if everybody got this, because everyone wasn't here when we started the session, so who doesn't have one? If you raise your hand up.
Um, David doesn't.
I was tardy. You got the first one, Michelle, you didn't get the second one.
Are you under?
Excuse me. Yeah, Quentin's got them now, I gave mine to Quentin.
So, so this level starts to incorporate also additional revenues. It isn't only about increased expenses, it's about increased revenue, and there's a whole list on the back. This isn't, I thought it might be easier for you to keep track of if I did front and back, so if you flip that one over, you should see the changes in revenue. And increases are shown in parentheses in case anyone has that question. So this is where you see the 435,000 of increased utility franchise revenue, about halfway down. And again, we do have the 850,000 of the increased property tax replacement revenue on there, too. So that's just trying to help us all understand what the differences were between options one and two.
Michelle, that $850,000 is, what period of time is that replace revenue for? Is that the entire year, is that for six months?
Right.
Okay, that's the entire year.
Yep. That would, that's the change in what we will receive. And that amount changes based on whatever our tax levy is.
Right.
So you'll, you're going to see different amounts for that rollback replacement every time a different option is discussed.
Sure.
Because every time the tax levy changes, that amount changes.
Sure.
But yeah, that is
That's an annual.
Basic, that's, that's just the increase. So the total we're expected to get is around 1.83 million, but this is the additional from, because the rollback increases by 5% for 16.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Michelle, on, what are the, why are things in parentheses and why?
Yeah, well, we're trying to get to a net increase or decrease in what it would take in property taxes to fund it. So we start out, increases in expenses are positive numbers. So if you go to the, well, it's hard to tell you which is the front side. The sign that starts out with personal services increases, positive numbers are increases in expensive, negative numbers are decreases in expenses.
And the negatives are in parentheses?
Yes.
Correct?
Okay. So, you know, then when you get to revenue, an increase in revenue reduces your net expense, so increases in revenue have to be in parentheses for this math to work. So any revenue line item that's an increase is in parentheses, any expense item that's a decrease is in parentheses.
Okay.
And the, at the, at the base level, talk about the conclusion, at the base level, the increase is actually a reduction of 257,990. And the reason for that is because of picking up the additional state replacement revenue. There would have, there isn't, there is a net increase in cost, but it is absorbed by the increase in the rollback revenue, rollback replacement revenue, I should say, I'm sorry. Then if you go to the additional request level, that bottom line is actually an increase in cost of 255,000. The difference between the two is about 500,000. And the next question is, well, if that first one is a reduction in cost, why aren't residential properties getting a reduction? They're not getting a reduction because they're being forced to pay more of the pie. Commercial's getting a big reduction, residential, well, everything's relative. Commercial's getting a large reduction in comparison to residential, which is having to pick up an increase. And the state's portion of that increase is 2.45 percent, but our increase is a total of 2.62 percent to residential because of how much residential value there is versus commercial value.
Steve, I know you had some questions regarding that option number one. Did that, have those been answered sufficiently, or you have anything else?
I think so, yeah. Give me, give me a little while to absorb this, but, and Michelle, so the additional request levy, that basically is option two, correct?
Correct.
All right, all right. I'm sorry I missed that. And yeah, let me, but this is what I was looking for.
It's option two on the rate impact sheet, yes.
But in effect, Michelle, what you're saying is option one, we're using an option, so the first option that we would realistically look at would be option two. Or isn't that even one that should be considered as an option?
They should all be considered.
Yeah.
I don't think option one, based on the conversations we had with the departments, is probably completely viable the way it stands. I, and I wouldn't do it anyway because there's obviously revenue adjustments that we want to make. But there were also some additional cost things that came up later during conversations that I, I think are in the city's best interest to address. So I, I would be reluctant to adopt option one without further adjustments, which is why you have the other options. You don't necessarily have to do all of option two either. Those are requests that are at your choice, and that's why we've addressed some of those in the other line item adjustments piece, but there may be other things that you, that you're interested in adjusting as well.
Anything else, guys, or anything other than just these worksheets that anyone would like to discuss regarding the budget? I would like to remind everybody that the way I started the meeting was saying we're going to have meetings on Mondays and Thursdays, but there will not be a meeting this coming Thursday after our agenda meeting. Michelle will be out of town at a pension board meeting, so we will not have a budget review meeting this coming Thursday. We will have one next Monday at whatever time it falls, whether it's four-ish, something like that. And I gotta look at my calendar, but I think we'll have one Monday and Thursday of next week. It was at, I can't remember.
Thursday is actually the hearing.
Oh, okay, Thursday, Thursday, okay, that's correct, so.
But that's at four.
That's at four.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I just would, would hope that any questions, suggestions, changes can be made before Thursday, though that's been kind of the whole point of these. So it does take Michelle some time to figure those things. So if we can try to get any options added or subtracted or whatever done by Monday at this meeting so that she can have them by Thursday, rather than asking them on Thursday and expecting.
Right. I had hoped to have all the ideas, you know, got my arms around them by today, actually.
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty much in Des Moines most of the next three days, so my time is limited this week. And in order for me to do a presentation that's meaningful, it, that takes some time. So we really do need to wrap it up. I will tell you, as we get closer to insurance renewals, I have, I am working on some revisions to the health insurance that should be positive to the budget situation. So I think we could target discussing them next Monday unless someone has an interest in scheduling something for Friday of this week. I apologize for the scheduling.
No, that's okay, but I'm just thinking, I'm trying to remember everybody's schedule. Michelle, would, would you prefer to have kind of this coming Fridley as Fridley, Friday as the deadline for option changes so that you can compile whatever is at the end of the day Friday?
I think to be fair, to be fair to all of you, so that you have time to look at the information.
Yeah.
I think you probably will want that. And, you know, if we're still calculating options Thursday morning, there's no way those can be put into a presentation for Thursday at four.
Right.
There's, there are too many numbers. It just is too, too difficult. Potentially, I could do the budget presentation based on a different number, and we could present options, yet, but the agenda will be
Would that work for everybody?
Set before then.
To try to have any suggestions or options or changes by this coming Friday to Michelle so that she has the opportunity to have that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could just make a comment. We've had more budget meetings this year than I think we've ever had, so I would see no problem in having those.
Mr. Mayor, speaking on behalf of Councilman Lind, I know he's going to be gone until Saturday night, and I mean, I understand he's gone, and that's, that's his choice, not, not our issue, but I know he was hoping to have some meetings yet on Monday. And so, Michelle, if, if anything you got on Monday that wouldn't allow you time to get it put together by Thursday, is that, because next week you're here, correct?
Next week I'm here, I'll, I'll try.
Okay, and I mean, I'm, I'm not looking for you to, you know, make any promises. I just know he asked that, he was going to ask me to ask that we have a meeting Monday, and I said, well, you kind of already had that tentatively scheduled, so, yeah, that was covered, yeah.
Well, let's plan on having a meeting Monday, prior to committee meetings and so forth. Let's try to have, if Councilman Lind has subjection, suggestions or options, maybe he can do it first thing Monday and get them to Michelle so if she's, has the opportunity to make any changes, but I think we'll, we'll shoot for that.
I'll do the best I can.
I know, you will.
There's just a limit to how many hours.
Right.
It gets worthless after a while.
And you'll throw all this in his box that he'll have that when he
I can, yes. I mean, the things I handed out today are actually things you have, but I can give him additional copies.
Okay.
Mr. Row, one other quick question. You know, again, not to belabor the point, but last year, one of the things I found very useful was that we were able to sit with Michelle while she was at her computer, and as we kind of came up with, well, what about this, or what about that? You know, obviously, it's not fair to her to have her at the podium and, and expect her to have those numbers at her fingers, and because she was sitting at her computer, she could just key it up, and we had those answers. Is there any way we could do that up here? Is there any way to have Matt run a wire up here and have her plug in her laptop, and then as these questions came up, we could do that? Would that be possible, or is that not?
I'm going to let Michelle answer that. It seems to me like it's unfair to, I mean, I don't, I wasn't in the one meeting that you had last year with Michelle, but I, I know how hard she works to get these numbers together, and just putting a number in a column and hit, I don't know. I'll let you answer that.
Yeah, it's not quite that easy, unfortunately.
Yeah, I didn't think it was.
I mean, it's, I can do it, I'm willing to do that for dollar changes, but there are so many circular calculations in terms of property taxes and the rollback replacement that my potential for error is going to go up if I'm going to actually calculate taxes on the fly. That's why I was hoping to get ideas of what kind of programs or what kind of revenue and expense changes you want to make, because then I can make sure my numbers all work out. So I don't want to make mistakes. I don't want to have people say, well, that's not the levy rate we thought, because I haven't had a chance to, you know, to, basically to check my work and make sure the tax calculation and the rollback replacement is all right, because those, they're just circular calculations that take a little effort.
And I think, I think you're always, as you have been throughout this process, if somebody emails you a question with, with a set of circumstances, she tries as best she can to get back an answer to you as soon as she can.
I will, and I've had a couple right now that, and Mr. Lind may have left town before he got my response back, but there's a couple of questions out that I think he had that I, I really can't answer because you're asking for departments to do something. So we need, if we want to do that, we need to actually give the departments maybe time to calculate what it would mean. So, and I'm just going to, this is an example out of the sky, but if you wanted to close the library four hours a week, I, I am not really in a position to tell you what the cost savings of that would be. We need to ask Cheryl to do that. Same thing, I mean, if you say we're going to cut a police officer position, yes, I can tell you what that is. What I can't tell you is what that does for their program. So it kind of depends on what your question is and how you're asking it, what I'm able to do for you without other people's help.
Okay, if we could, we're running over time here. We have a presentation by Kent, and again, I'm encouraging everybody to please contact Michelle by email or whatever if you have questions, to present on the Paris trip. Kent?
All right, Kent Schenkel, Culture and Arts Director. First of all, I want to thank the council for approving participation in that conference by Sean Page, our curator and myself. Just a little bit of background, we first attended this conference, the Haitian Art Society Annual Conference, in 2004 when the conference was held in New York City. And I can, with great confidence, say that this has consistently been the most productive conference that we have been involved with or attended. Every year, it produces tangible results. It has, it provides us with very rare opportunities to gain knowledge about the very specialized field of Haitian art. And this is information that we can use in interpreting our collection and making it meaningful to visitors. It has also allowed us beyond our wildest dreams to position ourselves at the Waterloo Center for the Arts and as Waterloo, as a national and international leader in the field of Haitian art, due to our involvement with the Haitian Art Society, and because of the leadership role that we play at these conferences, and we've been able to broker that to becoming the go-to place for Haitian art on a national and international scale. Each of these conferences, probably most importantly, provides us with opportunities to meet and build a network among Haitian art enthusiasts, which include collectors, dealers, scholars, museum professionals, and artists. And we work very hard to build these connections at the conferences, and then we continue to follow up and cultivate and nurture those relationships, which result in donations to the collection of art, new partnerships, the inclusion of our collection and programs in scholarly publications, and in future exhibitions and programs in our community. In addition to these direct connections, the contacts that we make kind of branch out beyond that, because each of these people that we, we come into contact with through these conferences then become ambassadors on our behalf and spread the word and awareness and interest in our museum beyond to their very own networks. So the impact that this has is huge. Just as an example that was brought up prior to this trip, directly as a result of our participation in and via the contacts we've made through the Haitian Art Society, the Center for the Arts has received over 1,500 works of art valued at over 1.5 million dollars donated to our community's collection. And these gifts have not been limited only to Haitian art. Significantly, Haitian art collectors also collect other things. In particularly, they tend to also collect Mexican folk art. And so that collection has grown exponentially as a result, strangely enough, of our participation in the Haitian Art Society. These conferences vary greatly from year to year, but they do generally differ from kind of the traditional conference setting where you spend most of your time in a conference hotel or conference center. And typically, these conferences will feature things such as guided and behind-the-scenes museum and gallery tours, visits to private collectors' homes, and presentations by scholars. And this year was no exception. Each year, the conference is held in a different city, different location. Last year, if you'll remember, the conference was held in Haiti, which had been kind of a long-term dream for our society, and it was a great experience. This year's conference was held in Paris, France, and we received council approval for myself and Sean Page to attend. Additionally, Laura Stamlar, our marketing director, our coordinator, attended the conference. She registered as a public participant, took vacation, time away from work, and paid her own expenses. And before I address the specifics of the conference, I can recap the expenses that were required to support our participation. And, let's see, these expenses, the costs were supported by a cultural leadership partner grant from the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, if you'll recall. And after backing out costs for the airfare for the trip, which were paid for by Friends of the Art Center, we were approved to spend up to $3,100 for conference expenses. We held the line, and actual conference expenses totaled $2,286, which is $814 less than the requested amount. This year's conference was organized around the historic 200 years of Haitian art exhibition, which was mounted at the Grand Palais. It was curated by Regine Cousin, and this exhibition presented a very broad survey of Haitian art from the colonial times to the present, which is not, which is atypical for any Haitian art exhibit that I've ever seen any place before. And it was a very ambitious project and, and one that really kind of shed new light on Haitian art. And in addition to seeing that exhibition, our group benefited from a guided tour presented by Regine, the exhibition curator. It, because it was, the exhibition was very much kind of a survey of Haitian art from 2,000 years ago to today. It presented sharp contrasts and comparisons. And one of the things that it really pointed out, which is actually kind of revolutionary- And one of the things that it really pointed out, which is actually kind of revolutionary in terms of previous Haitian art exhibitions, is that Haitian art is much, much more than just the work of the self-taught artists, the intuitives or primitives, whose work has been widely recognized and celebrated. Today, Haitian artists have migrated all over the world, they work in all media, they take part in the global culture and they work as part of the contemporary art scene. And these are artists whose work and the kind of work that they do is not currently represented in our collection, because our collection is the product of what other people have collected from the past. And we do find that sometimes this is resented by current Haitian artists and contemporary Haitian people, feeling that it's not really accurate reflecting who they are and the kind of work that they put out. So this provided us with some new opportunities to better represent that aspect of Haitian culture and Haitian art. It provided us with access to some of these artists who are working on a contemporary basis all around the world, artists who we previously not, did not either know or have connections or access to their work. Some of these include Elodie Bartholomé from Paris. She's a performance and installation artist, and she did a performance art piece in Haiti. And she showed us the video of that, and that is something that we can either bring her to the center potentially, or at least bring that video and the remainder or a painting that was created as part of that piece to our museum. We also saw the work of Barbara Prizot, who's lived in Haiti, Canada, Paris and Senegal, among other places. She works in mixed media, dance, performance, film and installation. Sasha Huber, who is an artist who lives and works in Helsinki, but she's Haitian, has a Haitian background. She works in mixed media, performance, video and installation. And we'd previously been aware of Pascal Monan, but we saw her work there, and she also does performance, video and installation. And this provides a great opportunity for us, something that we're very excited about, because our center also has a, an existing program highlighting performance art primarily, we bring in performance art artists from all over the world, working in partnership with the University of Northern Iowa. This is a way that we can marry those activities and those programs with our Haitian art collection and show the work of Haitian artists who are working in performance and new media as well. And another thing that's kind of nice about that is, you know, while there are artists working all over the world, Haitian artists, when they work in traditional media, sculpture and easel paintings, it's a little cost prohibitive for us to consider, you know, shipping their work to Waterloo, Iowa. However, the beauty is, if they're working in performance and video and installations, a lot of those things can be easily shipped or replicated and so forth. So it's more manageable in a way that we can bring the world to Waterloo in a reasonable way. And it was such an inspirational exhibition, Sean and I are working on planning to present a lecture based on that exhibition later this year and making connections to our collection. And that will be open to the public. I won't be able to detail all the conference activities, but I'll present kind of some of the highlights. One was visiting the Quay Branley Ethnographic Museum, which is a new museum in Paris, and they have ethnographic collections from all over the world, including works from Haiti. And their curator gave us a guided tour, and he had been doing some work with bizango figures. Actually, they had one in, on exhibit there, but then they also, he got kind of sucked into a controversy in Paris related to those figures. These are kind of religious figures, they're made out of fabric, they vary in size, but some of them are almost human size. And they're kind of very mysterious, a part of the religious tradition there. Most people outside of the culture don't know a lot about them. And he, because of this incident, apparently some of these figures had been sold in Paris, and there was some question as to their age and whether they had been misrepresented in terms of being antiquities or something. He ended up being questioned by the police, even though he wasn't involved, but just as an expert. And apparently, the police took one of these figures and they did an autopsy on it, opened it up to find out what's inside of it. Something that really, most people outside of the makers, those practitioners, don't even know. And he, they, that also, they also led him to x-ray the bizango figure that they had in their collection and found that it had lots of different objects embedded within it, again, that no one knew about. We have these figures represented in our collection, and this curator was, presented us with some writing that he had done about it, which actually he wasn't able to publish because of the police investigation. But we have the information and a contact, and we got to see those x-rays. So now we kind of know what's inside of the piece that we have and what's typical of those. I mean, that's the kind of thing that you don't find out any other way. Let's see. Also, one of the other highlights of these conferences is visiting private collectors' homes and seeing their collections in their homes and having them tell you about how they built their collections. We visited a collection in Paris belonging to Joel and Vanessa Dreyfus. He had grown up in Haiti, and they'd lived in New York and California, and now they currently live in Paris. And he's written a book about growing up in Haiti. They have a nice collection. We went to a smaller town, Lissoe, to see the collection of Dominique Linnville, who has probably one of the best collections of work by Zephyren, one of the primary Haitian artists. And then a special treat was to see the collection of Jezebel Traub, who is the daughter of Luc Turnier, who is an important female Haitian artist. And her work is relatively rare, there's not, hasn't been a great deal of scholarship on it and so forth, but she had this great treasure trove of it, and we got to see every piece that she had. She was incredibly gracious, and so that's, these are pieces that you don't see in the public realm. Just a partial list of the accomplishments, impacts and future programs that we will see as a result of our participation in this year's conference. Groundwork was laid for selection of Waterloo as the host site for the conference either next year or the following year. And in fact, we recruited three new Haitian Art Society board members for our board, and I believe all of them are very supportive of the conference coming to Waterloo, Iowa. So I think we can be fairly confident of that happening. A collector, a particular collector who has supported in the past, made a commitment to make additional, an additional donation of art to the Center for the Arts collection, including some Mexican folk art. And we made other contacts, which ultimately may result in or encourage future gifts to the collection. As I mentioned, Sean and I will be doing a public lecture, and we will also be reinstalling the Ruling Feldman Gallery, which houses the Haitian art collection at the Center for the Arts, based on ideas that were generated at this conference. As I said, we'll begin making plans to bring works by some of these contemporary Haitian artists that we encountered, bringing those to the Center for the Arts. We garnered a commitment from Sidney Jenkins, who is the director of the Selden Rodman Gallery at Ramapo College, an important Haitian art gallery on the East Coast in New Jersey, just across from New York City, to partner with us on future projects. And these may include programs, exhibitions, publications. And Mr. Jenkins has made plans to visit us this year to view our collection and further identify opportunities for collaborative projects. Another kind of exciting development was we established a relationship with one of the conference participants, someone that we didn't know at all before, Peter Hafner. He's a doctoral student at UCLA, and UCLA's Fowler Museum is one of the leaders in collecting and studying Haitian cultural objects and material culture. And he is doing research on Haitian art collectors in the marketplace, and so he's planning to visit us, the Center for the Arts, and interview and write histories of our major donors and share that documentation with us, which will be greatly, will be very valuable for us. And then another individual, Andre Juist, who is a Haitian artist and an art critic that is located in New York City, will be visiting us again to study art collection, and he plans to produce critical writings based on the collection as well. And then finally, we built a relationship with Marta Dance, Dancy. She's a programs assistant at the Museum of Modern Art, and she is doing research and writing a paper on Luc Turnier, whose daughter's collection we saw in Paris. And she has a great relationship with Turnier's daughter, and she is going to advocate for a donation of Turnier's work to our collection. And we'll be working with her in partnership with the Rodman Gallery to develop an exhibition of Turnier's work. So a lot of great things have come out of this conference, where we came off of it incredibly excited and excited about what we can bring back to our community.
Counsel, do we have any questions at all of Kent?
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith. Kent, did we get a copy of your presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And then you mentioned bringing the festival or the gathering convention, whatever you want to call it here. How many people attended the one in Paris?
The one in Paris was probably about the smallest conference that we have ever done, primarily, I think, because of the cost. And then the other part of it was the terrorist activities that took place in Paris shortly before. We were at about 30 people who had made commitments to go to the conference, and shortly after the terrorist incident, it dropped down to ultimately 14. But that conference varies anywhere from that figure up to around 100.
So the 14 includes our three?
The 14 does include our three.
And so the gathering in Waterloo you would expect would be more in the 100 range? I think that's what you said.
It would be, it would be much above the 14. It's a lot more affordable to come to Waterloo and, but, and, you know, that said too, we were disappointed in the overall numbers of participants, but really what happens is it doesn't end up only being the participants that we kind of connect with through these. It's all the people that we work with in all these institutions, the museum curators and, you know, the collectors and so forth that we build those relationships with. So that gets kind of added into that number, as well as, like I said, you know, all these people that we meet with, they end up spreading the word. In fact, one of our biggest donors, Janet Feldman, came to us through, she doesn't participate, she never has participated in any of the Haitian art conferences, but one of the gallery people that she's worked with over the years kind of sent her to us and encouraged her to make donations to the center. And, you know, she ended up giving us her entire collection, you know. So, like I say, it can't be measured just by these, the numbers of participants, although we like to see as many as possible.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counsel? We're over here. Ron?
Quickly, do we have to loan out any of our exhibits to anyone, and is there a charge for that?
We do loan out our exhibition, our collection for other exhibitions. To date, we haven't charged except for expenses. What we found is every time we put it, our collection out there, stuff ends up coming back to us, we get donations to the collection, contributions and so forth. Right now, we have an exhibition of works from this collection at the Arts on Grand, the art center in Spencer, Iowa, which has been incredibly well-received. See, that will be coming down. We've mounted works from our collection at sites all over, including Decora, Omaha, let's see, Okoboji, let's see, Lafayette, Indiana. And we've also shown works from our collection at Brown University and the Rhode Island School of Design. And again, that helps us get grants, because we're making an impact beyond our walls as well, and creates future donations and partnerships for future projects.
Okay. Kent, great presentation. Thank you very well. I particularly liked one comment you made, "Bring the world to Waterloo." What a great comment, and I think it sums up very nicely what this trip helped do. Dennis, you guys have got 10 minutes, but tell us about your stormwater management program. If we can do that in that length of time, that would be great.
Is this mic working?
I don't know. Talk into it most. No, actually, I think it is.
Testing one, two?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, you got to talk right into it, but it is.
All right. Phil's handing out some things that we'll refer to here with regard to our stormwater management ordinance revision that we're proposing to Section 8-4C-4 is the post-construction stormwater management section of the ordinance. The proposed changes deal with stormwater quantity and stormwater quality. I'll be speaking to the stormwater quantity part of the change, and then Phil will speak to the quality part of the change. Just very briefly, probably all know what stormwater detention or retention is. I'll just take an example here. You have undeveloped land, let's say it's grassed, and you have a rainfall and there's a certain amount of runoff from that undeveloped land. Then a development comes along, there's buildings, parking lots and so on, you have a same level of storm, now you have additional runoff. So what stormwater detention really involves is storing the additional runoff for some period of time and then releasing it at the pre-developed rate, so it has less impact on the downstream properties as well as the storm source system. So one of the most often used methods of stormwater management is stormwater detention, which is basically a dry basin. You see these quite a few places around town where the water will collect on a site, it will pond up, and then after a relatively short period of time, maybe within hours, it would drain down and then you'd have a dry pond again. There's other methods of stormwater management, you know, there's bioswales, pervious pavers, different things that are used nowadays. Quick review of the stormwater detention policy. Back in the mid to late 1970s, stormwater detention was presented here as a policy, which required that the allowable release from the site was a five-year undeveloped storm. And then the storage requirement was a difference between that and a 10-year developed condition runoff. That was later included by reference as a policy in the storm, excuse me, in the zoning ordinance. And then on February of 2011, it actually became an ordinance in the part of the stormwater management program. So the revisions that we're proposing now, as far as quantity, is to change the storm requirement from a 10-year developed to a 100-year developed storm. So what that does is increase the requirement for the storage, it increases protection for the site as well as the downstream properties. We've taken a survey of several other cities in Iowa, shown in the handout there, I think there's 18 other cities. All those cities require a quantity, requires the stormwater to be addressed in the quantity matter. And then we also asked them as far as their developed condition storm design versus release rate. And most of them have a 100-year developed and a five-year undeveloped. There are some, like Cedar Falls has a 100-year developed, two-year, two-year release rate. So with the number of years that have passed and these changes that have been made in this particular stormwater program, even by other cities, it's generally accepted that the standard is 100-year designed versus the five-year undeveloped release rate. So that's what we're proposing for the ordinance change. It provides a greater level of protection for the site as well as downstream properties. It doesn't change the release rate requirement from the pond, but it does require an increase in the volume of storage in the basin or whatever method. Sometimes there are actually underground storage facilities that you don't actually see, but it's stored underground in various methods. One thing I just wanted to mention is Eric mentioned last Thursday, this has also become an issue as far as subdivision developments, as noted in the key per addition proposal. And there's residential support as well for increasing this requirement to 100-year storage. So that's all I have as far as the stormwater quantity portion, and we'll let Phil speak to the quality issue, and if there's any questions, we'll... And we'll let Phil speak to the quality issue, and if there's any questions, we'll try to address those.
Thanks, Dennis.
Phil Schubert, Engineering Department. So, the changes that we are proposing to make, again, would be the water quantity increase that Dennis just discussed. The other two changes would be with our water quality requirement. Our storm sewer permit that we carry from the EPA requires that we have a post-construction ordinance that considers both water quality and water quantity. The means by which most other cities have achieved their water quality standpoint have been through the management of what is called the water quality volume or the first flush. That's the first inch and a quarter of stormwater coming off of the site. The stated goal within general permit two for water quality is an eighty percent reduction in what is called TSS or total suspended solids. That's the sediment, sand, things like that, that are washing off of those paved surfaces during a stormwater event. I did include in this a sheet from the Iowa Storm Water Management Manual that talks a little bit about the water quality volume. The idea with management of the water quality volume, management of that first flush is the majority of the pollutants that are going to be washing off of those surfaces are going to wash off during that first flush. After it's been raining for a while, most of the stuff has already been washed off. So, if you can manage that first flush, that first inch and a quarter, either by soaking it up or by detaining it and releasing it over a period of time, in this case, twenty-four hours, you're going to achieve that goal of eighty percent TSS removal and meet your water quality requirements. The other proposed change in the ordinance stipulates that in those basins where we have steep slopes of three to one or greater, that they provide some form of immediate stabilization, whether that be a mat cover, sod, stone, something along those lines. The reasoning behind that is it can be very difficult to get seed to establish on those steep slopes, and not having that seed established is the cause of significant permit delays in terms of getting permits closed out. It can also, because these are typically draining directly into our storm sewer system through an intake, contribute sediment to our storm sewer system.
Thanks, Phil. You guys got any questions, guys or gals? I'm sure everybody completely understands that. I think the bottom line is, is that we are going to increase our requirements for these subdivisions and other water quality issues, and I think that's going to be a good thing.
Just to mention, our proposal would be to have this on council next week.
Next Monday.
The first reading.
Yep. Very good. Any questions?
Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith.
Dennis, do you have any idea of the typical development, what this is going to add to the cost?
Cost-wise, I don't. I did look at some existing sites that have been designed with a ten-year developed storm and looked at it for a hundred-year runoff, and it's not consistent. It varies as far as increase of volume required from maybe sixty to eighty percent over a ten-year storm. Now, that's going to, of course, relate to the use of the land. Potentially, there would be less land on a given-size parcel that would be available for a parking lot or building. But if it's underground, there'll be some increased costs, obviously, just because of increased volume required. But as far as the number, I don't have any.
And did I understand you to say that the majority of these other eighteen cities, most of which are in our part of the state, that they already have something similar to this on their books?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Here's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?
Yes, Mr. Hurt.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Welker.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed.
Second.
Motion to be made with the proper second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Agenda. Larry.
Yes, sir.
Want to present to us what you have for us?
Larry Smith, Superintendent Waste Management Services. The ordinance change has to do with what EPA is calling a pre-treatment streamlining rule. There's basically thirteen parts in it. The city is already meeting some of the parts, but we are changing the ordinance where we meet the other thirteen parts. Want to go into the whole thing?
Highlight a few up if you want. I think we got a report here, but you can go through some of them. So...
Which ones?
Get some highlights.
I mean, which ones do we need to know about exactly?
Well, some of it has to do with sampling for pollutants not present. That's one we're not going to be doing. General control mechanisms, full of mass limits for concentration limits we have to do. The approval authority is just getting, like our pre-treatment coordinator, authority is signing the reports. Making sure that we're the control authority. Has to do with updated removal credits. Before we give you removal credits, you have to have oversight of their pre-treatment program. Slug control has to do basically with just that. It's not a continuous flow, it's a batch flow. Significant industrial users, I think we're defining more clearly is who that is. Basically, significant industrial users is based on a flow. I'll try to get the rest. If any, there's changes, if any of the significant industrial users making changes now, they have to notify us. Significant non-compliance reporting, and the definition is extended due. Include additional types of pre-treatment standards we require to do. Significant industrial user reports must include now a best management practice, which wasn't there before. The significant industrial users' control mechanisms contain any best management practice that we require by our standards. Control authority for the sampling of significant industrial users is in that. Periodic reports that we were making before are now defined in that. Non-categorical significant users are now determined and categorized. Again, change, if there could change in the control authority, which is us, that has to be done. And then we want the changes as to how we designate a person to sign the reports. There were changes made in the ordinance, and if you ask me each and every one of them, I can't tell you. We, well, when we get dealing with the legal end of it, we send it into our attorney and have them go through it. Naturally, we reread it for any comments, but it was basically just wording changes mostly.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
Larry, so these changes, does that put the onus on the business owner to monitor and report, or is that onus on us?
Both. It puts more on the business owners or significant users into how they run their pre-treatment program and how they report to us. It puts more on us because we have to do more testing and follow-up than we did before.
So, is it our responsibility to notify them, or does EPA do that? Or who lets those business owners know about these changes?
We do. We have a program this year that we started where we have to contact every business in the city of Waterloo. And then we make determinations off their flows, their constituents in the wastewater and everything else, that stuff where they fall in as a significant user.
Okay. And then just real quickly, on page number four on the electronic copy, virtually everything on that page is red, but then it has a line drawn through it. Is that supposed to be through it, or is that supposed to be underlined? That is so.
That was taken, I believe, and I don't have it with me, but I believe that was taken out because there was some wording that was required in this program that did not apply to us, that the EPA is allowing the state to handle that, so it was taken out.
That old pre-treatment thing basically is off this, correct?
That red line, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, along that same, on that same page, what was taken out, it looks like, were definitions of what was meant by non-compliance.
Yes.
So, I just wondered why they would take out those definitions, Larry, rather than just leave those in and just have a four-line statement about non-compliant standards? That's my first question. And the second question is, it looks as though this deals with some of those job classifications that were on the agenda last week, which we just ended up going ahead and saying, "Go ahead and ask for those," start the civil service process, but we didn't include appointments?
I don't believe there should be anything in the streamlining process that has to do with jobs or job applicants or anything.
Right.
We're talking, what we talked about last week was the code enforcement officer. And we talked about moving three people around in the department, basically to cover positions.
I thought one of them, Larry, was a pre-treatment.
The one is the pre-treatment foreman, yes.
And that was one of the primary ones that needed to go first.
Yes. But that has nothing really to do with this, except regulations that come out with it. And this program basically is giving us more work than a part-time person could do. That would be the only effect on it. It's mentioned in there about pre-treatment and pre-treatment people and all that. But I really don't see the connection there. I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but...
Okay.
And your first question?
Was, I just wondering why they would take out all those definitions.
Because we had to change some wording as far, and definitions as far as what SIUs were. And that's why it was done. I mean, it was, SIUs, the determination on if you're a significant industrial user or not, again, is based on flow. And if you change the, how do I want to say this? If you change the requirements, then you have to change the definition.
Okay.
Maybe I'm not explaining that great. I mean, but I have the requirements right here, and if each of you want a copy of it, I'll be more than happy to copy and send it to you.
Okay. It looks as though this was not felt to be necessary.
No. There were some things taken out and some things added.
Okay. I can talk to you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-third order, if you'd read the roll, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Clear.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The motion is second for the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. If any gentleman would like to take that business.
I approve Regina Bullock and Suliman Zerovic to the, Regina to the Housing Authority Board, and Suliman to the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on those two items. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those folks are approved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed, and also the minutes of February sixteenth.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We have new business.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those travel costs.
Thank you.
First, we have Sergeant Farmer and Sergeant Bowes, and P.O.A. Bovee and P.O.T. Brownell to attend the narcotics recertification class in Spirit Lake, Iowa, April sixth through the eighth, at a cost not to exceed $1,760. Next, we have Investigator Poehl to attend the Macintosh iDevice training in Madison, Wisconsin, April twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, at a cost not to exceed $903. We have Lieutenant Payne and Sergeant Gerke to attend the central container program in Johnston, Iowa, March tenth through the twelfth, at a cost not to exceed $560. And finally, we have Sergeant Rasmussen to attend the advanced, less-lethal instructor development program in Mankato, Minnesota, April thirteenth through the fifteenth, at a cost not to exceed $958. I move we approve those four items.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? I have a question for Dan. This iDevice training session, is that, that's more than how to use an iPad?
Correct. Dan Treoka, Director of Safety Services. That's for recovering evidence off from these devices in regard to criminal investigations.
We better keep it locked up. Thank you. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those items passed. And we have some pre-authors.
Madam Chairperson.
Thank you, David.
We have building maintenance, $39.75. These are charges for, charges were estimated for emergency pump repair. Invoice received for $39.75 above initial pre-authorization. This is an amendment to the previous pre-authorization dated 1/20/2015. Building maintenance, $5,500 plus $200 shipping and handling for a pump for Boiler at Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Leisure services, $1,600 for purchase. And leisure services, $4,716 for 12 Skyline honey locust trees to be planted at Cedar Valley Sportsplex. Leisure services, $1,280 plus $24 shipping and handling for additional membership cards for new Sportsplex members. Police, $5,000 for purchase of an additional five ShieldWare RMS licenses. Police, $23,655 for remodel construction for new property evidence building. Sanitation, $25,000 for replacement of garbage carts, sewer, $19,989 to repair of number three digester boiler with replacement tubes, replacement of refactory floor, re-ceiling and hydro testing of boiler. Traffic operations, $2,101 plus $50 shipping and handling for 150 14 GA, 1.75 inch by 12-foot Talispar posts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Have we discussion?
I had one quick question for Director Trelka. The $23,000, $23,655 for the remodel construction for new property evidence building, where's that building at?
Right across the street here.
Thank you.
And what, what is the plan on that?
They're adding walls and a vestibule so that when people come to retrieve their evidence, they can stand in this vestibule and not be standing outside. It's a secure area. And there's also plans for bringing a vehicle in the back to bring evidence in through the rear and remove it from the rear, a more secure area.
Can I ask, did I ever miss a meeting where we approved the utilization of that building for these purposes?
Well, that's, there doesn't seem to be a process in place. My Captain Crowe and Captain Malus had discussions with Craig. I've been in discussions with the mayors and we talked about potential meetings, but it just doesn't seem like there's any defined process in place to go through a situation such as this.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Miss, just one question, if I could. Director, how do you, I just wanted to see, I see there's in here for new membership cards and I just wanted to get a report on what our membership is currently.
Sure. Paul Hudding, Labor Services Director. Pat, as of today, we're at 2,000 even, our memberships. That equates to somewhere around 5,000 members, but 2,000 memberships.
Okay, thanks. That's great.
Thank you. Anything else?
Paul, if I could, as long as you're up there. And our original goal is 1,400?
That was our original goal. We've been inching that up. Now our goal is somewhat over 2,000.
And then, and then... Yeah. And then the 5,000 number, what was our original number for that? Was that 3,500 or 4,000?
I would have to look. The, the membership types haven't, they haven't played out exactly as the consultant had. Then we don't have quite as many family memberships as we thought, so the actual number of members may, members per membership was projected to be a little higher than what it is, but the total number of members at our 5,000 now, I can safely say that's over what we had set as our initial goal.
Thank you.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
I would vote aye on everything except the $23,655. Again, I mean, I know I was in meetings, maybe other people weren't, but I know I was in meetings and we built that new central garage. We talked about the possibility of using these other buildings for other things, putting them on the market, selling them, putting them on the tax roll. And I'm not saying that's what we need to do or not do, but we're not having any discussion on it. We're not having any city council input, so I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. All, okay, we've all, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. All opposed, same sign. You've already...
That one item, yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the budget line item amendments. Copies are unfiled in Ms. Chair's office. And also that we pay the bills this week, which are $2,547,433.15, 2,547,433.15.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We adjourn.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this regularly scheduled Monday, February 23rd meeting of Waterloo City Council. We have a good turnout tonight in council chambers, so glad everybody came to participate in the process. And for those of you that might be watching us on our public access television channel, welcome to you also. Madam Clerk, would you start by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Mr. Paul Hudding, our Director of Leisure Services. Paul, please.
Please join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda. And the amendments are deleting duplicate liquor license application for Hy-Vee Market Cafe Number Three, Item F, and also deleting consent resolution number four. The penalty has been paid. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from February 16th's regular session.
Second.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the agenda or the minutes either? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a proclamation tonight, and we have a friend that comes to our council meeting on a fairly regular basis, Bruce Casey. Bruce, I'm going to ask you to come up to the, to the front here. I know you want to say a couple of words, so can you, if you can get through the door there, we'll help you.
Squeak, rattle and roll.
Shake, rattle and roll, Bruce.
Squeak.
Squeak, rattle and roll. Okay. We can live with squeaks. Here we go. Let me, let me help you up. There we go. I'm going to get you here and I'm going to get you turned around.
Squeak.
There we go. Ladies and gentlemen, March is Brain Injury Awareness Month, and Bruce approached us a couple of weeks ago and asked us to do a proclamation, bringing that to our attention and making everybody aware of this important recognition, so we're glad to do so. This is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas, brain injury is a serious national public health epidemic affecting at least 5.3 million Americans. And whereas, every 18 seconds, someone in the United States will sustain a traumatic brain injury, which equates to more than 4,000 people per day. And whereas nationally, traumatic brain injuries, direct medical costs and indirect costs such as lost productivity, total and estimated $76.5 billion. And whereas each year, at least 50,000, 50,000 Americans die, 275,000 are hospitalized, 1.4 million are treated and released from emergency departments, and 80,000 Americans experience the onset of lifelong disabilities as a result of sustaining a brain injury. And whereas approximately 2,500 annual brain injuries are reported in Iowa, and more than 95,000 Iowans are living with long-term disabilities as a result of a brain injury. And whereas prevention is the only known cure. And whereas the Iowa Department of Public Health Brain Injury Program is the lead agency for coordinating brain injury services in the state of Iowa, and strives to increase brain injury awareness and works to implement services to Iowans with brain injury, their families, their caregivers, and professionals. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. Bruce, I'm going to give this to you, and I'm also, I know you want to say a couple of words, so I'm going to give you a microphone here. And you got to put it right up to your mouth and you got to talk loud, or they won't hear you, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and City Councilors, for proclaiming the month of March 2015 as Brain Injury Awareness Month, because life of brain injury is never the same. It can happen to anybody in a heartbeat. Somebody could fall down, fall down, somebody their head, certain problems, not know why. So, you know, it's very serious, very common. I appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Bruce, you're, you're more than welcome. Would, would you mind if I kind of tell them our story?
Sure.
Do you remember it?
Yesterday.
Do you really?
Mm-hmm.
What year was that? 81, 82?
1223, 82.
82. I was a patrolman on third shift patrol, the Waterloo Police Department, and we got a call of a robbery at Corks Grocery. I'm not sure what it's called Corks, but...
It was, I was from on the gate on Lafayette Street.
Okay.
Down the road from Corks.
Oh, down the road from Corks. That's right, it was down there. It was, it was a grocery store. And my partner and I were the first officers to arrive, and it was, not only it was a robbery and the attendant that night had gotten shot. And Bruce was the attendant that night. And I was the first one to walk through the door, and Bruce was laying behind the counter in a pool of blood, clearly had been shot squarely in the head in a robbery attempt. I didn't hold out much hope for you, Bruce, quite honestly, but you're an amazing example of fortitude and what can be accomplished in a very bad situation. Obviously, Bruce made it. We got the perpetrator, was arrested very shortly, but I will, every time I see you, I, I obviously think about that. And when you come in here, I just marvel at what I saw that first instance that night and, and what you are here today, that you are here to accept this recognition and testify to it, so, so thank you.
He's a faithful Christian.
I'm sorry?
He's a faithful Christian.
Yes, there you go. Okay. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, and Bruce, thank you, and I'll help you. (applause). I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hart?
I can make a motion that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda items 1A through B4. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be raised by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $2,547,433.15, 2,547,433.15.
Second.
Council, do you have any concerns or questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have a, the, the A4 is a deleted item, so I guess if I have any questions, it's not the appropriate time since it's not on the agenda technically, right?
It'll be brought back.
Okay.
It's just, we're not setting it to go back now because the case of the police, or it'll be brought back to pay with the office, so.
Okay.
It'll be on another...
So it's okay to go ahead and leave it on, or...
To delete it.
It's actually been removed from this.
Right.
Through the, through the amended agenda.
But it'll be brought back, so we'll have that opportunity to ask questions.
Okay. Further questions? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. I, I think Regina Bullock is here. Regina, are you here? Why don't you stand up for us, would you please? Regina is a new appointment to our Housing Authority Board. Regina, we just want to recognize you and thank you for volunteering your service. It's very important that we have people step up and give of their time and talents for these boards. We actually couldn't operate without it, so thank you very much for doing so, and we appreciate your time and thank you for your, for your volunteering. Appreciate that. Thank you.[1624.16][1624.16](applause). And I don't think Suliman is here. Suliman Dizdervic is not here tonight, but he has been reappointed to the Human Rights Commission Board. He served one term and will now be serving his second term on that board. So Suliman, thank you for past service and that future to come. Very good. That's all we have for tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Item number two, please. Mr....
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing in as for the parking lease agreement with Agapi Rehabilitation Agency PC to lease eight city-owned parking spaces located adjacent to 403, 405 Jefferson Street.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Before we take any comments on that, just so you know, you can leave anytime you want to. If you'd like to stay and do a little civics lesson here, you're welcome to. Don't, it won't offend anybody if you don't. That's fine. Thank you. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to the leasing of the parking spaces?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the city leasing some parking spaces to Agapi Therapy a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving parking lease agreement with Agapi Rehabilitation Agency PC to lease eight city-owned parking spaces for $100 per month located adjacent to 403, 405 Jefferson Street, expiring May 31st, 2020.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Before someone takes item number three, inadvertently, the first sentence of that agenda item was left off, so whoever takes item number three, would you please start with that standard language of motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, so I can get the thing started? Ms. Cole, would you please take it?
I move we receive and file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing on the rezone request by Green Acres Storage LLC to rezone 2.26 acres from R4RP, Planned Multiple Family Residence District, to BP Business Park District for the purpose of constructing a new 102,090 square foot indoor storage facility generally located east Residence District to BP Business Park District for the purpose of constructing a new 102,090 square foot indoor storage facility generally located east of 4015 First Drive.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, I know we received some objections to this, but I'll ask you, did we receive any objections, written objections to the on file for this item?
There were a few emails received that are on file in the city.
Very good. So, we did receive some email communications in opposition to this. The hearing is now open, and I believe there are people here from the audience that would like to speak. Since nobody called in, I would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
It's easier said than done. Buck, you know that.
I know, but, you know, it's, try, please.
My name is Bob Farr. I live at 1040 Sunrise Boulevard. And I'm here today up to talk about two issues. One, rezoning, and the second one is the timely notification of the rezoning. First, and I called the mayor on this, we received notification on February 2nd. The letter was written on February 28th, mailed on, oh, I'm sorry, January 28th. We received it on January, or February 2nd, and it was mailed on January 31st. Your meeting was on February 3rd. So, we did not have time, timely to-
The planning and zoning meeting you're talking about.
Exactly. What we're, I'm here for is more of a history lesson. When Cardinal Construction went to rezon the property out on San Marnon, we went before the council at that time to discuss the rezoning and the type of buildings because there was concern of car lots, fast food restaurants, warehouses, and buildings of that nature being put on San Marnon. We had a meeting with Mayor Hurley, quite a few of the council at the time. I believe, Mayor, you were on there. Mr. Schmidt, I think you were there. Ms. Cole, I think you were there. Mr. Welper, I think you were there at the time. And at the, after all the discussion was done, we asked, and everybody agreed that the only thing that would be put along San Marnon would be Class A office buildings. And the neighborhood was in agreement with it. The contractor, the developers, were in agreement with it, and everything was fine. We received notification of this rezoning request, and the building that's being requested to be put there is a warehouse. It is not Class A office building. It's 107,000 square feet. I know warehouses. I've got one. I've got one the same height as that one, and I've got 15,000 square feet of Class A office space, and it's still a warehouse. We are suggesting as a neighbor that the council lived to the agreement that they had with the neighbors. There is other land out there for this facility to be put. It could be put back by Highway 20 where it belongs. The city of Waterloo also owns land, some of it sprays across the street from our warehouse, that is already zoned for this type of facility. So, we're asking that for the consideration be made to the neighborhood. We don't want a warehouse there. I was asked during the discussion a few years ago about putting a warehouse there, and I was told by the council then, that's not where warehouses belong. Now, we're asking that the council lived to that agreement.
Thanks, Bob. And you did good on your time.
Unusual.
Anyone else?
My name is Maxine Barrows, and I live at 749 Excelsior Lane. So, we are going to look at some facts. One major concern is that this three-story building is opposed to the one-story that we agreed upon in 2004 when it was rezoned. Due to the height of the building, the light would be a major concern. The three-story building has lighting on the top two floors of all four corners of the building, producing a great deal of light, much more than any other structure there, and of course, higher up. Since this is a three-story building, it would in fact require higher poles for lighting the facility around the perimeter of the building. Their website indicates, and I quote, "well-lit interior and exterior areas," unquote, "and maximum nighttime lighting," quote. This would be a huge concern to the residents across San Marnon, as well as to the east and the west of this facility. There are a number of two-story house residents north of this area that would be directly impacted by the light from all four sides of the building and exterior perimeter lighting of this building. It is open seven days a week, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which presents a traffic concern. Truck sizes are up to 26-foot, which indicates a more industrial-type facility, and that is not what was agreed upon in 2004. The garage area is designed to hold as many as four vehicles, including both cars and trucks. The entrance to this garage area appears to be both in front and back, increasing the number of vehicles there at one time. With this type of facility, there can't help but be an increase in traffic. Office buildings currently in this area are normally closed by around 5:00 PM. However, this facility is open seven days a week, and therefore, are traffic. And please do not tell me otherwise. We live it every day, and we've been there since that, and we know about this rezoning in 2004. If it's changed, in my opinion, this is not fair to the residents of our area. If and only if there were no other options for building this facility, that would be one thing. However, there are other options, and it would be dug better, built closer to Iowa 20. Also, most importantly, if it's changed, then what next? You'd come back and say, all right, this would open an entirely new avenue for different kinds of businesses in this area, and we're back again. In addition, in 2003, our neighborhood had to submit a petition to the council, signed by residents of our neighborhood, to have the north side of San Marnon resurfaced with asphalt to decrease the amount of vehicular noise for residents. Something that should have been a given since the south side was already an asphalt surface. In 2004, we again began to talk to planning and zoning and the council for the zoning of that property. We did that to protect our residential living environment, and here we are again. Now, article in the paper yesterday stated that the traffic at the building is expected to be much lower than commercial offices uses there now. Living in this area for nearly 30 years, we don't expect that, and we do not believe that this will have a much lower traffic impact.
Go ahead and finish quickly, if you would, for the next one, please.
Well, in recent, in summary, according to my, the plot, there are 28 residences that would be impacted by this. And we do not want to see this change our living environment. We have worked very, very hard to make sure that our living environment is in fact intact. Now, just one more thing I'd like to tell you.
Can you go very quickly, please?
We have looked at, for a long time, since 2007, our neighborhood has been impacted with several things that we've had to overcome. And if you don't know the history of that, I'd be glad to share that with you. However, we feel that this rezoning is not fair to the residents. We have worked very hard to protect our residential areas, to be safe and secure, and so we have good living margins.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Seth Green with Green Acres Storage. I just want to address some of the concerns, and I think I've had this before in Dubuque. The lighting at our facility is, it's all on motion sensors, so somebody has to be in the building for it to activate, similar to most. You have motion sensors here, if somebody's in the building. Traffic, we probably are one of the lowest-impact traffic businesses that I can think of. We have approximately 20 customers a day. That's total from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Most people, and it's not warehousing, it's self-storage. So, most of the people come out and drop their stuff off, and they might not come visit for another, it could be six months. I have customers that have put stuff in storage at some of our facilities for 10 years, and have never, ever come back to it. They pay their bill, and they just have it locked in there. There are some people that come three, four times a month. But it's not a high-traffic volume or anything. Everything's done inside. You don't even see any of the stuff going on. No one will see that. They're unloading trucks. The lighting, it would be no different than an office complex. Motion sensors, so if they're there, they're going to see it. Maybe they'll see it from the road. We do have some display windows that we display them because it's a new concept in a lot of cities, and we have to kind of let people know what we do. And it's self-storage, not a warehouse where you've got forklifts running around or anything like that. We try to make the impact very minimal on the parking. So, any pole lights will be on the backside of the building, and that's where we put all the parking. So, it would be less intrusive to the neighborhood there. The front part of it, there's no parking. There's going to be no pole lights. There's probably going to be a little bit of lighting on the side of the building, but it's downward lights where it's cut off so that they don't see it. Otherwise, it's a very quiet business. And the dentist's office next to me will have 20 times as much traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Counsel, do you have any questions of Mr. Green while he's at the podium?
Just got one quick question, Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Green, in regards to, just, because you spoke about it briefly, I did have a question in regards to lighting from the facility going directly to houses. Can you speak to that?
So, what we do at our Dubuque facility, we have them on timers in the front display area, just for a little bit of advertising. And that's why we want this location, is we need some drive-by traffic. We don't need a whole lot of drive-by traffic, but we need some so that people understand what our business is about. It's a new concept across the country. It's a third-generation-type storage facility. It's very popular because the long, narrow buildings, people just don't like those anymore. It looks warehousy or whatever. So, we put some lights on the upper floors, and we have it on a timer. They're not on all night or anything. Most of it is on motion sensors throughout the day. So, you wouldn't even see it in the glass building. I can look across the road at the glass building. I really can't see in the building. So, you don't see much of it.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
And we will have some lights on the back.
Mr. Green, do me a favor. Lift the microphone up, would you, sir?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, lighting, leaving away from the building, that's what you, so, there'd be very little impact to the residents with the lighting that's leaving your facility outward to the residents?
We're not going to have any spotlights. Basically, what it's going to be is these fluorescent fixtures that are inside our building. It's going to be no different than an office building like here. If you were outside looking in, this is what you're going to see.
Any questions?
We don't have any outside.
Mr. Green, I'm familiar with your building in Dubuque, it's on Northwest Archery Road, correct?
Yes.
The one in Marion, what street is that on, or where's that located?
Lindale Drive and Blair Sherry Road.
Lindale and Blair Sherry?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think you have letters from the cities. The Dubuque one was our first one that we've done. There's one other one in the whole state that's in Des Moines, and it's a four-story building. And it's right in, it's pretty close to, well, actually, I think there's a residential neighborhood right across the street from it on the one side. The other side is maybe commercial across the road. But it's a kind of a new concept, because everything is inside. So, it doesn't cause any noise. There's hardly any traffic with it. You know, we'll probably average about 600 units at this facility, the Dubuque one. We have a pretty good idea. We've been running it for about two years now, maybe a year and 10 months, and we average about 20 customers a day. That's, they come in, they pull into our unloading area, and you can see that. There's sensors that actually open up the doors automatically for the customers to come in. The door shuts behind them 30 seconds later, and so you really don't see anything.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Green, what do you find attractive about this particular site, and why not something closer to Highway 20?
We need drive-by traffic, but we want local traffic. Highway 20 is going to be probably, I would say, 75% out of town, just passing through. And our business requires local traffic. People use self-storage. Everybody's been in a position where they've sold their house. Maybe the house closings don't jive quite, so they're displaced for a little bit. So, we're a temporary storage thing. You know, it's not going to be where there's semis backed up to docks, and we're unloading things, things like that. This is just self-storage, no different than any other self-storage facility.
So, do you not, I mean, based on the, based on the size and height of the building and the signage, you'd think you could probably see it from San Marnon?
You can, but you have to, so, the Dubuque one, I don't know if you're familiar with Dubuque, the Northwest Archery Road. Are you familiar with that road at all? We're right on the Northwest Archery Road. We have houses within, it's two businesses away. So, it's probably to the other side of that parking lot. And it fits in well. The residential neighborhood is what uses our facility. It's not, we could be down farther, you know, if there was an open lot, that's two, two-and-a-half acre lot, but there just is not anything. And we have options, you know, we could go to 20, but it just doesn't work for this project. Dollar-wise, for how much I'm going to spend on this project, I've got to have some drive-by traffic. That is local traffic. In 20, when you're going 65 miles an hour or 70 miles an hour, you're not going to see our building.
Mr. Morrison?
Not of this person, but of the previous two I'd asked.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good. Anybody else have questions of Mr. Green? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, who would you like to ask a question to?
Well, I believe it was Bob and Maxine, is that correct?
Okay, both of them?
Yes.
My goodness. Bob? Maxine?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Just recap. What was the prior promises given to you by city council?
The promises that were made was that on San Marnon, facing San Marnon, in the houses, there would be Class A office buildings, similar to what's been constructed out there, dentist's office, the banks, things of that nature. It was promised that there'd be no car lots, there'd be no fast food, there'd be no convenience stores, there'd be no warehouses, because it didn't fit into the neighborhood situation. There was land that was reserved. There was land that was reserved on the corner of San Marnon in Amesboro for a convenience store, and I believe that's where the bank is being built now. And there was also land further south in Amesboro that was reserved for a convenience store or a restaurant. But everything from that corner over to Burger King on San Marnon is supposed to be Class A office buildings. We had no complaint about anything like this storage facility being built backing up to Highway 20, because there's access back there. There's local traffic that could get there. Trust me, I have a 30-foot building. People can see that from San Marnon and that. So, what we're concerned about is the promises that were made to the neighborhood are not being lived to. I commend Mr. Green for wanting to come to town. I'm in favor of economic development, but it also needs to go into the proper locations. And in somebody's backyard is not it. I have an email from a gentleman who is not able to be here tonight, and this property would look right in his backyard. And he is absolutely opposed to it. So...
Thanks. Maxine, do you have the same question for Maxine?
Yes, I do.
Try to get the mic. If we don't talk into the mic, what, you in television can hear us.
Okay.
Thank you.
A couple of things. The facility in Dubuque, and I'm, I was born and raised there, so I'm familiar with Dubuque also. And that area is an area that has a lot of traffic to it. There's a Hy-Vee store there, a Goodwill, there's a Holiday Inn, there are other grocery stores, all these. And so, yeah, it does have a high-traffic area. But that is also a high-traffic area. It is not a residential area. So, our concern still is with the lighting. We can sit in our back part of our home, and the lights coming off of the access roads that come onto San Marnon come right through our trees and everything right into our back, right into our home. And this isn't going to be, I mean, this is, and this isn't going to be any different.
And in 2004, what promises, what did you hear the city at that time saying to you regarding any future development out there?
Exactly the same thing that Bob said.
Okay.
Office professional buildings like are already there, dentist's, doctors', banks.
Was it to be kept at one story?
Yes.
As I think I heard you say.
That was correct.
Anything else of Bob or Maxine?
Pardon me?
No, I just, any other questions of you two? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Forrest Dilawood, 1725 Huntington Road. Just two quick questions. How many years of tax abatement, if this is approved, how many years of tax abatement will they have? And will it be in a TIF district? And if it's in a TIF district, how many years before the taxes paid on that building will help pay the general fund or police and fire protection? Could you give that to me?
I'm sure Noel will. I'm going to ask Noel to speak.
Thank you.
Forrest, and I'll ask him to answer both of those questions. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience at this time?
Hi there. My name's Tom Senate. I live at 505 Excelsior, and I don't really have any, anything to add, other than I've been asked to come for some neighbors who couldn't be here to speak in opposition of- be here to speak in opposition of the rezoning, similar to what Maxine and Bob have said. They hit all the valid points and all of the concerns of the neighbors that I've talked to, so I just wanted to add a voice to the discussion.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. Anyone else from the audience? Noel, why don't you give us a spin from the planning department, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. You want me to just kind of go through some of the things they've brought up?
Well, however you'd like. I mean, I would like to try to answer Forrest's questions about what kind of incentives there are, and best we can on that. And also, just from the planning standpoint, I know you've issued a, an opinion of support and asked for approval, so you might tell us your spin, and spin is a bad word, your take on why this is a good thing for that, that area, and do address the concerns of the citizens, please.
Okay. Of course, this went through our P&amp;Z. We have been actually testing the mail system, by the way, since Mr. Farr brought that up to us. We've got, we've actually mailed ourselves things to see how long it takes to get back to us, and we've got varying results from, I think, five days to nine days, so we're working with the, the post office on that to try to correct that for, for future meetings. At the planning commission, the planning commission did look at the proposed plan. As the, as the residents noted, this was rezoned back in 2004. The majority of the land right along and abutting San Marnon was zoned to R4 RP, which allows for professional offices and up to 10% commercial development in the R4 RP district. There was no specifications back in the 2004 as to any type of one-story design restriction, but again, they all has to go through site plan reviews, so that would be up to the council upon development. The land, as you move further south, there's a mix, and further west to the actual intersection and interchange, there is some CP, which is planned commercial, and then there's BP, Business Park. So a map of the entire area kind of has a mix of all that. But as they noted, it's R4 RP along, actually along San Marnon in this area, which is why we're here for the rezoning request. At the planning commission and at the staff review, we did look at the design of this building in terms of being compatible to office designs in the area. Obviously, you have the drawings in front of you, and as Mr. Green noted, the lighting is similar to that of an office. It is multi-story, but again, there was no restriction on the stories. It looks like an office building in many ways. There's other ways it looks like a warehouse as well with the metal design. The request to rezone it to BP Business Park, the BP Business Park allows for professional offices, commercial uses, and compatibly designed industrial-type uses. We thought this was a compatibly designed industrial use. We did look at the Dubuque Northwest Arterial site. Again, it's a very similar type corridor to this with a mix of offices and some industry and commercial, so we thought that that would be similar. To date, we have not received any opposition within the 200-foot boundary notice for the rezoning request, so we did recommend approval.
Okay. How about, just, can you, can you speak to the incentive portion that Forrest asked? Is it in a TIF district?
It is located within the TIF district. No development agreement has been forwarded to council yet. That would be negotiated. You cannot mix incentives with rezoning requests. That's called contract zoning, and it's illegal. So that would be a separate action by the council later, but it is in a TIF district, so if a development agreement were approved with rebates of any type in terms of when it would be released, that would be up to the council for obligations in the TIF district for debts owed and obviously revenue generated.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Cole?
Um, this is for you.
Yes.
I'm looking, the rezone from R4 RP Plan Multiple Family Residence District, does this mean the way it's currently zoned, that we, there could be apartments or condominiums or?
Actually, no. That was one of the restrictions put in place when this was rezoned, that there would not be multifamily on this side of San Marnon. But normally, in an R4 RP, you could have that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Just a quick question. Noel, I think Mr. Bob and the other lady spoke to a meeting or something in 2004 or something like that. Were you?
Yes, I was.
You know anything about that?
I was staff.
You were staff? Was there an agreement?
I mean, the agreement would have been with the rezoning in, actually approved. So the R4 RP, I mean, allows for professional offices. So they're 100% correct. This is, this is zoned for office development right now, which is why they're requesting the rezone to the BP. So the BP would be a slight change from that 2004 decision to allow this indoor storage facility as a use there with the BP. Obviously, if the council were to approve that, it would be because you thought it was in accordance with the overall general intent of the area, and it was compatible in design to the office design. If you deny it, it's because you believe that it should only be for office use there.
And then just a quick question, because this is one of those votes that kind of has me in the middle, because excellent project, exactly what we need in Waterloo, but also have a concern from neighbors in that area. Have we taken a look at any other compatible sites that would do everything that Mr. Green had mentioned a little bit earlier about some, some access to local traffic and those things? Have we, is this the only one that we could come up with?
You should probably have asked Mr. Green that. We, we have looked at more than one site in Waterloo, and he'd probably be best to address what he thought of the other sites as well as this one.
But we did look at other sites.
Yes.
Okay. Forrest, go ahead.
I just would like my question answered. How many years of TIF? TIF is either forever or it's for 30 years or 20 years. Isn't this in the 30-year program out there?
It's in the 30-year program, but we don't have a development agreement to, to designate how long that they get the incentives. Is that, did I correct that?
If I'm understanding the question you're getting to, this is an economic development TIF, so it would have a 20-year time.
20, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Noel.
Go ahead, Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, Noel, or any of the others that were referred to by Maxine or Bob, or do you recollect an understanding that there was with the neighbors, such as Bob and Maxine in 2004, that what is being proposed there is contrary to what the understanding was? I'd like to know that.
He said, yeah.
Starting with Noel. I mean, is that, is that an understanding that the?
We'll have council conversation.
The, the land, this site, this particular site in question and some others along the San Marnon front end, you can, it changes as you get further west near Amesboro to what some designated uses were. But this is zoned R4 RP, which allowed for professional office.
But my question is, is there an understanding as what Bob and Maxine presented to us here that this is contrary to what they understood was going to be any future development of that area?
I do believe that they believe it's contrary to that. That's what they've stated.
Okay.
As staff.
So their understanding back then is consistent with what they're saying now, that this is not something that they would have went along with back in 2004?
They're saying they only wanted it for professional office, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go. That's why we zoned it like that. I'm assuming because of...
My, my recollection was it was a, how should I say, heated discussion, because there was concern about any development in that area. And what we ended up with was the business Class A office space, one story, no golden arches. I don't know if that was ever, if that ever went down on paper, but that was something that was discussed at the time.
And what I hear them saying, Carolyn, is that this is not that, what they would have agreed to or?
Yes, they didn't want anything, so, but we were now at Class A office space.
Mr. Green, the other sites that were looked at?
Yeah, we did look at a couple other sites. One was in Waterloo and one was in Cedar Falls. There's one in Cedar Falls that's zoned properly. I can go in there in probably two weeks and do it. We like this site here. You know, it, so the one that is in Cedar Falls is actually on University Avenue. So I'm going to have to weather the storm of the new road construction project, and that's going to, if you've ever been a business and ever had road construction in front of your business, it's just awful. There's no compensation. It will kill a business when it first starts out. I can do that. That's probably my backup plan. This is my preference here. We looked at another lot that we didn't even have to go through zoning. It's right on Amesboro and I think it's Country Club area, but we had some problems with meeting fire codes, that we probably wouldn't be able to get around a road all the way around the building because the lot wasn't big enough. And so that's one of the concerns on that one. And so it's kind of a balancing act for me. I got to figure out the right option where I have some drive-by traffic. I need local traffic. I want to be close to the residential neighborhoods because that's who uses me. And it's, one of those things, this is a new concept too, and I know, I don't know what the agreement was in 2004, and I think that's maybe one of the big things here, but this is a new concept. So this concept wasn't even around in 2004. So it's hard to say what, a lot of cities have trouble with what type of business this is. How do they class it? Do they class it a warehouse? Do they class it self-storage? Because it's a whole different type of building. Nothing is done outside where your traditional storage is, so. And I had the same thing in Dubuque. They were curious about it. And the individual about the taxes, we pay about $130,000 in property taxes a year at the Dubuque facility. Marion's probably about $120,000. Our Cedar Rapids location is about $98,000.
Thanks, Mr. Green. Bob?
Mayor Council, you know, again, I want to stress, we're not opposed to any economic development, but there are other locations. The property Mr. Green's talking about, I don't know the logistics on the fire requirements and that, but that's Cardinal's property off of San Marnon across from VGM. Perfect location for it, because that's what was agreed to. It's back by 63. It's away from the neighborhood. We wouldn't have a problem with that. Again, ours concern is we, we agreed to Class A office buildings, and yes, Carolyn was right. Nobody wanted, none of the neighbors wanted any construction, but after sitting with Mayor Hurley and I believe it was the Hearst and Gene Lenhart and that, we all agreed that Class A office buildings were that. There's another perfect location that the city owns, if Mr. Green would look at it, and that's on Ridgeway, right next to Denso. The city owns that land. It'd be a perfect location. It's close to the neighborhood, and there's a lot of people driving by it.
Thanks, Bob. Counsel? Maxine?
Sure.
I do also want to reiterate that the day before the meeting or the day of the meeting for planning and zoning, they did receive some neighborhood calls. And it's my understanding that one of those did not go very well, which at some point I would like to talk to Mr. Anderson about, but we tried very hard to let them know that, I'm sorry, but we all can't stop our jobs and drop everything with one day's notice to be at a meeting. And I'm not sure, based on the information that I read from the minutes on the planning and zoning website, that our concerns were truly addressed.
Okay.
Or that they knew exactly why we were concerned about that rezoning.
Thank you, Maxine. I would have had to come here anyway, so thank you. All right, let's, counsel, do you have questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welber?
I generally do not vote against any kind of development. After all, we need development to help reduce this with our taxes. This is a very attractive building. I certainly hope that we can find a place for it to be built, but I do remember those meetings with the residents in that area as if it was yesterday. It was more than one meeting. It was a number of meetings, and we did agree to office buildings of that type. I certainly don't want to start a precedence of start building, storage buildings out in that area, so I'm sorry, but I, I can't support this one.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Schmidt?
I, I'm familiar with the building in Dubuque. I drive by that on a regular basis, and I think it's, it's a great building. And as several council members have said, we all want to support economic development, and I think this is a great project, but I just think this is the wrong location. So for that reason, I won't support it either.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrison?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Welber said, that, you know, there's a couple reasons. One, one of them is what has been said as understanding that they had from 2004, and the other one is, I, I do believe that, although I believe in economic development and what that brings to Waterloo, that there should be another place that is more suitable, that doesn't have this kind of opposition, nor this kind of pass associated with it, so I'll be voting no as well.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. I, I'd take a motion if somebody wants to make one. Who would have made the original motion?
Carolyn did, I believe.
Carolyn?
I move that we close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign.
I move we receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone on certain property.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Morrison?
No.
Mr. Welber?
No.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Very good. Thank you very much. I, I think, and I hope the message is very clear, that, Mr. Green, we very much want your business. We very want, want your building, and we very much like to have the opportunity to show you some more sites, but this motion has failed. Let's go to resolutions, please, and if we could do four, five, and six.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Move that we adopt a resolution awarding bid in the amount of $178,357 to Van Wally Equipment of Urbendale, Iowa for 2015 turf maintenance equipment. Five, I move to adopt a resolution awarding bid in the amount of $24,601 to P&amp;K Midwest of Waterloo, Iowa for the purchase of three AFM 4216 Land Pride mowers. And six, I move we adopt a resolution approving sale of used John Deere Gator to Waterloo Softball Association in the amount of $2,127.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding those three, four, five, or six? Roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
Item seven is a request for the release of reversionary rights pertaining to certain development agreement entered into between the city and blockout contracting and development for the redevelopment of the former Lincoln School site with new housing. Eight, I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for funding from Cedar Trails Partnership for a maximum amount of $2,500, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents. And nine is a resolution approving construction plans for paving and storm sewers serving Nottingham Third Edition as submitted by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying Inc. of Waterloo.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Cole. Madam Cole. Any questions, counsel, comments regarding seven, eight, or nine?
Mr. Mayor, could we just have a little overview of item number seven?
Noel, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. This is a former Lincoln site at Parker and Burton. We entered into agreement after the Waterloo schools conveyed to the City of Waterloo for Mr. Roof to build 14 new houses there. He has built 13 of the 14 now. One of the homes that was purchased from Mr. Roof, the attorney wants to have the reversion clause in our development agreement released, so they have clear title. So we're releasing it on that one lot that's been requested. We won't release it on the rest of them until the last house is built unless we get individual requests.
Further questions? Roll call vote on those three, please, Madam Clerk, seven, eight, nine.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carried. The next three, please, 10, 11, 12.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welber?
Number 10 is a resolution approving agreement with the Waterloo Water Works for water main replacements in conjunction with the fiscal year 2015 Street Reconstruction Program, contract number 873, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 11 is a resolution approving the contracts, bonds, and certificates of insurance with Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $514,955.64 for the fiscal year 2015 Geraldine Road, Phase 3, contract number 871. Number 12 is a resolution approving professional service agreement with JDE Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of not to exceed $46,500 for construction-related services for the fiscal year 2015 Geraldine Road, Phase 3, contract number 8- for the fiscal year 2015 Geraldine Road Phase III, contract number 871, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Mr. Welber, counsel, any questions on those three? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry. 13 and 14, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
I move to adopt a resolution to allocate $25,000 in hotel motel taxes to the convention and visitors bureau to be used for special projects using forfeited tax grant funds. And 14, a resolution approving Waterloo CVB Board of Directors' recommendation to fund fiscal year 16 CVB partner grants.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either of these, 13 or 14?
Mr. Mayor, I think at the work session, there was a question about one of those two, and whether or not this was something out of the ordinary that the council was giving up, you know, oversight or overview. Some of these were normally, we vote on these, and I don't know.
Which one are you talking about, Mr. Schmidt?
Well, the...
Number 13.
It was 13, yeah.
Someone wanted to sweep that into the budget.
Well, yeah, and they didn't have the answer because the board meeting was the next day or something, so.
Lift the microphone. Thank you. Mr. Frazel, would you like to answer that, please?
I certainly would. Aaron Buzza, Director Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau. The item 13, the $25,000, the tax grants had previously been approved. As an example, one for this past November was approved in the amount of $10,000 plus or minus for an event that we were bidding. We were in the running for, along with Davenport, they selected Davenport. They were in the process because we couldn't have funded them otherwise with that same amount of money, so they forfeited that grant. So the money then is back in that hotel motel tax grant pool. Michelle, if I misspeak, please correct me, but these $25,000 are put together to assist with the feasibility study that we're conducting for the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. So it's one award, not multiple awards, that we would make again in the future. It's an award to us for the city's, in essence, half of that project.
Thank you.
Mr. Morrison?
Go on.
Oh, you look like you had a question brewing. Counsel, with no further questions, roll call vote on those two, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item 15, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve professional services agreement amendment number one in the amount of $3,500 to Invision of Waterloo, Iowa in conjunction with the Waterloo Public Center for Arts Toilet Room renovation, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number 15? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. If there's anyone that would like to address Mayor's counsel, now's the time to do so. Please give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Like Mr. Forrest said, I'll try, so. Out of my neighborhood, we got a lot of concerns going on right now, and then the 15% sewage thing hit the paper the other day. That was one of them. Losing businesses out of Waterloo, Toys R Us, Radio Shack, JCPenney, I can't even remember the other one. But our tax base is going down. We're asking for raises for management, which they do a good job. I've had good luck with them. We're asking for three more policemen, three more firemen. Eventually, that cost is going to end up on the taxpayers, you know? We got special interest groups in this town buying Waterloo for a dollar, getting 10-year tax abatements, and they don't even live in Waterloo. You know, there's something wrong. There's something going wrong in there, and they said they feel there's something wrong, and they wanted to know where to go, and I said, "Well, you've got Tom Miller in Des Moines, Attorney General. If you think there's something going wrong, give them a call." You know, and then they said, "Does everybody in the council chambers pay attention?" I said, "Just watch the TV. You can see who's paying attention and who ain't." So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chapman. Anyone else from the audience? Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, and first of all, I want to give a...
Leon, just give us your name and address, please.
Oh, Leon Mosley, 99 Mosley Street.
Thank you, sir.
On Waterloo, Iowa, East Side. Anyway, I want, first of all, I want to thank the chief for all he's doing and his officers are doing about the gun violence and stuff. And I was called, asked to a meeting to put some people together that live in that Fowler Street area where these last two days of shootings has happened, and I met with them. And one thing we talked about was, on the corner of Elm and Fowler, we used to use those big cement barricades. We blocked the streets off for drug dealing. We can do the same thing for drive-by shootings, and that would be a perfect place for it. The people will feel a lot better, a lot safer, because you can't drive by. You got to go pull in there or get out of your car if you want to shoot them. The other thing that they brought up, and I had totally forgot about it, is that we had a contract, verbal contract with Mid-America, and it was IPSN, and they gave us six lights that we could tell them where we wanted it. They would put it on it, and we lighted the house up, because roaches don't like light. And these people are roaches. And one thing that really bothered me about this, if you, we also put on the books, my neighborhood association put on the books, a law where a house can be declared a nuisance property. And if you go back, I ain't going to tell you which house. Chief know about them all, and I know everybody else do. But if you go back 10 years, you'll see how many times the police have been at these houses, and it's the same ones, over and over, on Fowler and Fowler and Irving on Elm, I mean, that's where I first started chasing drug dealers. And now I'm back over there again, you know, dealing with grandkids and stuff. And I'm saying, this is ridiculous. And it gives us a bad name, you know, and it's really dumb, stupid, and everything else. And if you would start declaring these properties nuisance properties, we got, I think we got a $100 a day fine or something like that on the books. I can't remember. But we need to start enforcing that, and I mean enforcing, you know, get them out of here.
Thanks, Sam.
One other thing.
Go ahead and finish quickly, if you would, please.
Okay, I will. We got a guy on these Forester, his name is Gant, and he lives in that block where Aaron Sanders Funeral Home is. His son got killed in Cedar Falls, and it just irks me that 25 kids were right there when he got killed, but nobody saw nothing. And I knew they would turn it in, you know? Come on, 25 kids. Somebody gonna turn it in. They never did, so.
Thanks, Sam.
I would suggest that we put them in jail too, or get them with complicity.
Let's, Dan, would you just address the nuisance property ordinance? I mean, Leon's brought that up, and we have a nuisance property ordinance. Can we, I mean, would you update us? Would you tell us what that is now and why we can or why we can't use it right now? Please.
Dan Tralca, Director of Safety Services. We redid, revamped the nuisance property ordinance. We did go to trial with one case, and we lost. We didn't, we did not prevail. That was in late last year, so in November, we massaged the ordinance again. So we, in essence, have reset it. I've been running some properties through it. Since it was only four months ago, it's been difficult to get to that three-call threshold with some of these properties. Just this morning, I ran some properties on Parkview, but we will get to the point where we will be able to start utilizing it again with time.
Good, thank you. Leon, I remember those barricades. I'd forgotten all about that. And I also remember the Mid-American Lighting Program. You know, those are both great ideas, and I'll follow up on both of those. The barricades have to be used prudently in order to not impede traffic, but those are great ideas, and I'll follow up on both of them.
I just want to say one thing. I just want to go back to retirement. I like it. And Jim?
Thanks.
You want the three policemen instead of me? I have to.
Okay.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fore Street. Again, on the council meeting, you've approved a bunch of different resolutions on dollar and cents amounts, and a lot of them say not to exceed. Then we come back a few months later, and all of a sudden, we've all allowed them a change order. Does not to exceed not mean not to exceed? Thank you.
Thank you. David. Is there anyone else?
I think Pat has a comment.
Pat?
What's that?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. One of the things, it's not really that funny, but it is something I want to bring up, and I got a tie on today that has Little Miss Sunbeam in honor of Sunbeam Bread. I'm not pushing it or anything like that, but there was a number of people that I saw[1677.16]